I call the order of the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, June 27, 2023. Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 11 members present in the chambers, one member who is attending virtually, and all 12 members have signed in.
All right. Thank you, Clerk. Now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by Alder Eck.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I pray that you will give us as leaders strength so we do not grow weary in our leadership role, guidance and wisdom to make choices that would edify and build up, courage to make decisions that are not always easy but necessary. Father, the task may seem overwhelming and exhausting. I pray for divine strength for every leader and that we will not rely on our own strength but on you. Leadership is hard to define. Lord, let us be the ones to define it with justice. Leadership is not about watching and correcting. Lord, let us remember it is about listening and connecting. Leadership is not about telling people what to do. Lord, let us find out what people want. Leadership is less about the love of power and more about the power of love. Lord, as we continue to undertake the role of leader, let us be affirmed by the servant leadership we witness in your Son Jesus. Let us walk in the path he has set and those who will follow. Let our greatest passion be compassion. Let our greatest strength, love. Our greatest victory, the reward of peace. In leading, let us never fail to follow. In loving, let us never fail. I pray that as we lead, we will not do it selfishly for personal ambition or vain conceit. I pray that you help us to realize that leading is really a task that requires us to serve. So, Father, raise us up as servant leaders. In Jesus' name, help us to work in humility. Help, make us selfless vessels of you in your image. Remove any selfish desires. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Alder. Now, on to approval of the minutes. Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the minutes from June 6, 2023, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any changes to be made there? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda. Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the agenda, seconded by Alder Eck. Any amendments there? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it, and the agenda has been approved. Report by the mayor. Just a few items here. First, Kids' Day was yesterday, so I want to thank our Parks Department, Park Staff, all of our city staff for everything they did to make it a success in spite of the rain that we had yesterday. So, I think in the 21 years, this is the most rainfall we've ever had on Kids' Day unfortunately, but still made it work. So, really appreciate all those who played a part in making it a success for kids and families throughout the city. Also want to shout out our kid for the day, Addison Van Ness, who very honorably served. Was happy to have her in the chambers and sign in the proclamation. And thanks also to our police department, who offered her a police escort for much of the day. My kids were wondering why I don't get one of those, and I said, "It's the kid mayor," you know, "they get what they asked for." So, but thanks to the police for offering that additional service. Also, we've got Fire on the Fox coming up on the Fourth of July, so want to thank On Broadway for again making that happen, definitely inviting people downtown starting at, I think, 3:00 at a number of locations in our downtown. Also fireworks at 9:45-ish around dusk, so encouraging everyone to come down and enjoy those fireworks and not fire off ones of their own, right, Chief Knott and Chief Davis. You know, we've got a really nice partnership between the fire and police departments doing some enforcement this year because of some of the complaints we've experienced in the past, so just reiterating, we really want people to come down here and enjoy the city's fireworks and not illegally fire off ones of their own. Lastly, a little bit of bittersweet news. Our director, Neil Steck-Schulte, who's done a really great job for us in our community economic development department, is departing. He's going to be the city administrator down in the city of Monona in the Dane County-Madison area. So, sad to see him leave, but really want to thank him for his years of service to the city of Green Bay. You know, seen some pretty cool things happen, made some pretty cool things happen with the carnivore development on the far east side, the Legacy Hotel, the development within the rail yard that continues to take shape, and a number of other things, including, you know, hopefully some approvals this evening. So, really appreciate everything that you've done for us, Director, and invite the council to share in that appreciation. Any words for our council director?
I guess just very briefly. Certainly want to express my appreciation to Mayor and this council for the opportunity to work for the citizens of Green Bay. There has been just been a tremendous amount of effort and projects that did get achieved, but there's a tremendous amount yet still to be completed and achieved. I think that sometimes in the Midwest, we have a tendency to underrate ourselves and we don't give ourselves enough credit as, especially as communities, we don't do a good job of that. Green Bay has so many good things going for it right now, so many opportunities with certainly the draft being a big one, but just the business growth we still continue to see despite economic headwinds, I think is a real testimony to, I think, the quality and just how great a community that Green Bay really is. So, I'm very appreciative of this opportunity and really can't thank everyone enough. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Director. With that, we'll move along to announcements. Alder Scannell.
I'd just like to piggyback and thank the director, Neil, that it was a pleasure working with you. It was great working with you, and wishing you the best of luck.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson? Yeah, go ahead, Alder Stoyer.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Neil, I appreciate the time you've spent with me and the other Alders on different projects. You have passion in your field, and we will miss you, but we've gained a lot in this city with knowing you and having your opinions and your desire to make Green Bay a great city. So, I thank you for that.
Thank you, Alder Stoyer. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things. One, of course, just to maybe chime on that bandwagon. I think with, you know, every employee that comes through City Hall, you hope that you can learn a little bit of something from them and maybe impart a little bit of knowledge as you head on to your next adventure. And I can honestly say, I mean, of all the department heads, Neil, I probably had the most interaction with you, and I appreciate that time. I appreciate that care, and you've certainly taught me a lot about development and which is, of course, a skill that hopefully has, we've been able to practice here as policymakers. So, thank you for that, and of course, best of luck on your new adventure. It sounds like a good one with many challenges ahead of you. So, and secondly, I wasn't intending to announce this, but I'm sure most of the folks in this room have heard, but I thought this is a cute story. So, as many of you know, John Minow and former Mayor Jim Schmidt started a new radio show. I think we're always looking for interesting ways to learn about what's going on in Green Bay. What I like about the show so far is it's not all political. It's kind of very informational about different things going on in our community. But, the story that I found neat, and Mayor, you reminded me when you said the mayor for the day, Addison was officially the first person to reject their request to show on the show because it was too early in the morning. So, I just, very decisive leader we have there, so.
Alder Weary?
Thanks. I just also wanted to tell Neil, you know, good luck, you know. It was a pleasure, really was a pleasure working with you, and keep that great sense of humor.
Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements? Seeing none? Oh, sorry. Alder Campbell?
I just want to say, I was just getting to know you, Neil. You're one of the last people I got to know about the last couple RDA meetings. I've learned a lot of the project, seeing it through to the end almost, and then I had to find out someone drove in my driveway and told me you were retiring, so.
And they are too, so I'm not going to let the cat out of the bag on that one. They work for the city. But I just want to remind everybody, today is National PTSD Day, and, you know, there's a couple little stories on it that brought it to my attention. And, you know, I just had a Vietnam Vet member die, and my neighbor used to be, and they just got back from Washington and just kind of got, it's kind of weird how things get close to you there. And, you know, as much as they can't enjoy the boom and the bang and whatever, and there was a nice little story that's on TV, I think it's more about remembering again for what they fought for and still what they're going through, and I think everyone should keep that in their heart.
Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll move along to appointments. All right, there's a motion to approve the reappointment. That was made by Alder Stevens and seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion there? Yeah, Alder Scannell, go ahead.
I meant to ask someone before, but since I didn't, city officials? What is that?
We're getting to that one, but we have to formally appoint our city treasurer.
So, it's a city position?
Yeah, they're-
Now, I get, okay, okay. I've just never seen it worded that way before, and I just-
Yeah, so there are, you know, Director Steck-Schulte's position, for example, is, you know, a city-appointed or city official, so we'll be, you know, handling this when we have someone to fill those shoes. But, yeah, there's a limited list of city officials that require confirmation from council.
Usually just had the job title in the past, so it kind of threw me a little bit, but now it sunk in. Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, so we had a motion and a second on the reappointment. All in favor will say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. Now, on to new appointments. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Weary. Any discussion on this one? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye. The ayes have it, and that appointment is made. So, congratulations. Really appreciate your interest in serving the city. And maybe if you just want to say just a couple brief words about yourself and your role here?
Sure. I'm Linda Chosey. I came from Brown County. I was the finance manager for the library system and worked for Brown County for about seven years. Before that, I was in public accounting with Schenck, which is now CLA, and I look forward to working with all of you and everyone at the city of Green Bay.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Treasurer Chosey. Appreciate your willingness to serve, and obviously, you know, if you ever need anything from us, feel free to let us know.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move along to our public hearings. We have a couple items here. One is a resolution regarding vacation of public right-of-way cul-de-sac at Ricky Street and Vine Street. The second item is miscellaneous ordinance number 06-23, an ordinance adopting an amendment to the Smart Growth 2022 Comprehensive Plan of the City of Green Bay related to property located at 2132 Decker Avenue. So, if there's anyone who would like to speak to these items, please approach the podium. Anyone who'd like to speak to these items? Is there anyone who'd like to speak to these items? Clerk, please let the record reflect, we have no members of the public to speak to those items. And we'll move along to ordinances, second reading for adoption. Alder Johnson makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one rule called vote, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, we will use the board.
You may vote.
And those items are adopted unanimously. On to the report of the redevelopment authority. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion here? Alder Campbell?
You know, this project happened pretty fast. It got a really slow start. I learned a lot by it. I was talking, you know, just recently with Steck-Schulte. And what I learned and what I saw going to all the redevelopment authorities is how the process works. Depending on how much it's needed and wanted and how much attention people give it, I think it's our duty to make sure that we slow things down a little bit more so that everybody understands each process. And I think it was brought up at one point in a meeting that Mr. Weary says we have to handle everything individually sometimes. And I think that's one thing I got out of that. I just see when things are shoved through, when it kind of got rushed through on the first and second reading to start, that was the start of a red flag for me. So, I'm just telling you kind of the process that I learned. The concern of some of the neighborhood was sort of misled, and not a lot of people knew, okay? And there was a lot of feedback on it. Still, same as before, but just a whole different neighborhood. Also, I see a whole bunch of corners getting bent. I see more money getting handed out. I see every single limit getting pushed to the max. I tried to show my concern and turn, tried to learn along the way about it, and I learned a lot, and I will be keeping an eye on every project from this point on because I think it deserves every attention, every move of every commission, because I can understand how things can get done and slid through. My main concern is that, are we going to take each individual, now this is a development, and it was all about money, it was all about time. But I think every single constituent in the city going through whatever, putting up a garage or doing everything else, I think we have to kind of take a step back and maybe bend some corners on things like that to try to, because those are people with fixance and major concerns, and they save their life savings to make this improvement to their property, and they're only trying. And if I can see the same kind of concern used with a bigger project like this that we can do, I think Green Bay would be a better place. And a lot of people will be able to make improvements and ask their neighbor and not be, "How come he got to do it and I didn't get to do it?" Well, one had more money than the other, maybe, and it's just not right. I'd just like to see that looked at a little bit closer when it comes down to private concerns and not just big developments. I'm going to give this my blessing. I learned a lot, and I was just showing concern for other developments that were in the project that have been going on for 25 years and really developed that corridor of University Avenue, east side of Green Bay, and there's still a lot more room to go. You know, we got the university, we got Bay Beach, we got, I mean, not that I'm not up for low-income housing, the main concern was, let's just make sure that these kind of developments in five years start out and maintain the same kind of rules that it doesn't start to become a shambles. And that's just my concern. You know, everybody, I think, did a good job on it, but I think it just was kind of a second prize. Here you go, we got to make a trophy for you, here's a spot. And I think a little more time could have got put into it, and I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Eck?
I'd like to make a motion to open the floor.
Motion has been made to open the floor by Alder Eck, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. And just a reminder to approach the podium, state your name and address, and then we allow for three minutes for public comment.
Alder Woman-Eck, I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and just approach you tonight. You know, it's Ted Matcom, Wisconsin Market President with Gorman &amp; Company, 200 North Main Street in Oregon, Wisconsin, is our headquarters. This has been a long process. I do respect all your comments, Alder McCampbell. We did have, you know, we had a meeting at the site. You know, are those meetings all that effective? I don't know, you know, but I did try to reach out to some people who had some concerns in the neighborhood. One thing was garages or no garages, and what we thought it was, you know, we like to manage a property without the garage. It's a surface parking lot. The same design was exactly what we had on military. It was, I thought that went through a huge process to me in my mind. Maybe it wasn't, you know, for that neighborhood versus that neighborhood, it could have been a little more extensive. But we did go through the channels of what we thought was appropriate. And I appreciate everyone who actually had, actually got to know a lot of the Alders and go through a discussion of how this process would, you know, kind of come to a fruition. Tonight, you know, we have a gap financing, in a sense, measure, which is the Development Agreement, which is the TIF. And these type of, I just wanted to say that people look at, you know, what our development costs are, which is $15 million, and this is actually an educational type of thing. You know, we build a market rate project with that WIDA product. It is, it'll be a fantastic building. You've all seen renderings of it. We're not cheaping on that at all. That is what we're building. And it's a market rate product, and you're going to go through this building, you're not going to be able to know the difference between this building and a market rate product that was built down the street and a new market rate product of today's energy efficiency and everything that will benefit the tenants. The biggest thing is, you know, what is this thing assessed at? Where you're going to see, it's only assessed at $3 million. Well, why? Because we're building a market rate product, and then we have tax credits from WIDA that brings that entire debt down to about really five, you know, $3 million, but it's really about $5 million because we have a little bit of a gap, which you're going to, you know, approve tonight, some of the gap financing. But the $3 million really is the story because what we're saying is, the rents that we're charging the residents to live there can only support a $3 million loan. That's what it is, even though it's a $15 million project. Those tax credits subsidize that part. And we've got about $2 million of gap financing, which we've come up through, you know, many sources. But that's kind of affordable housing. That's the WIDA template, is that you build this amazing building that lower-income people could live in, and then, you know, our income's about 60,000, or sorry, 60% of the county median income, which is, if you're a family of four, it's about, you know, $60,000, $65,000. If you're an individual, it's about $30,000. So, you know, those are the incomes we're going for, and they get to live in an amazing building, you know, like someone who's spending $1,800 a month on rent. They can live in that same apartment, but it's subsidized by the WIDA tax credit. So, that's just a real short description of why the assessed value is so low versus the total development cost, because we're trying to target those rents that can only support that $3 million loan. I'd answer any questions if you wanted on that, but I just thought that was a little primer, just so people understood the effect of the, and the power of those tax credits from WIDA.
That's helpful. Any questions from our council? Alder Stevens and Alder Campbell?
Do you feel anybody was misled?
In terms of the neighborhood?
Yeah, receiving notification.
You know, I tried to get into Alder Campbell's shoes because he was kind of dealing with some, like Tunan, who was the developer, as well as some other neighbors that were asking him questions. And to me, the process, as I said, was a very long and arduous one to go from that one. We just kind of thought we were plopping it here and that it was in the paper a lot, and I probably had, didn't have the perspective that maybe you did or that you did in terms of having the neighborhood there. I thought we went through a process. I didn't mislead anybody because I open-booked it. It was the exact same project that came over here, and I don't know what I would have misled anybody on. And I reached out to a lot of people and asked them to talk and meet, and no one really took me up on it.
Well, I was there with you. Two people came, and I know you sent out the letters to the area.
And I sent out the letters to the area.
And Tunan was one of them, and Thomas Wright or White Rubber Management was another one, and they haven't even reached out. Have they reached out to you?
They have not.
No.
So.
So personally, I feel nobody was misled.
I do too. I hope I didn't have a misperception of that, but I did not mislead anybody. I just, nobody contacted me to talk to them, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Campbell?
On that same precipice, one I was going to, like I said, give my blessing to, and what you said is very appreciable, and I'll relay that. And I'm sure there'll be constituents that I will try to mimic exactly what you're telling me because hopefully-
Or have them call me, too, Director.
You know what I mean, because that will be the constituents in the area. I know that.
Where are my neighbors?
You know, that are taxpayers that, and they just got hit, so they're looking at all that and comparing all that, you know? And they think they're funding it, you know, more or less. You know, it's hard to explain, and I know everybody had to explain a little bit to everybody. The part that came through is, I guess, we hardly had any notice of it ourselves because it happened so fast, so that we could, because when people called us, we're like, you know, we got two weeks. That's about all we could invest in it, you know, or a week or whatever it was, I'm not going to go back. But it's water of the dam. It's going forward. It sounds like a good project, so I just wanted to say, you know, we'll do, I'll do what I can on my end, you know, to try to make, to make sure that everyone sees, that I make sure that I see it through as a good project like you're promising, so. Thank you.
Thanks. And just to, you know, kind of respond to the speed of the process, you know, the, really the only stage that was accelerated was done by this body, which was to, you know, suspend the two readings. That's typically required for a zoning change. So, this body, you know, improved the speed of it, understanding the timeline that Mr. Matcom was dealing with.
And with that, you know, I went back to last blood and goal. That was our chance to slow it down, take a look at it a little more, you know, and that was a learning process for me to-
Okay. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess based on the information that we had previously, I felt like I was pretty well informed about the project, so when it came up again, everything's the same. I guess I'm a little mystified where some people felt they were misled, and I guess I would ask Alder Campbell, maybe in the future, he would talk to the Alder in charge of that area and let him know that some of his constituents aren't happy so he can address the situation. It's kind of like, you know, left and right hand, not knowing what each other's doing, and maybe that's where some of the confusion came in. But I like this project. I think it's well thought out. I think it's been thoroughly vetted, and if anything, the city hears about how we stonewall and slow down projects so much, they're leaving the community to go to places like Ashwaban and Howard and DePere and things like that. So, I kind of thought we were trying to speed things up.
The floor is still open, so did you have?
No, I don't. I'm sorry. No, I approve of your project completely. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Any questions for our guest? Sure. All right. Thank you, Mr. Matcom. A motion to close the floor made by Alder Eck and seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor will say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. Floor is closed. Alder Galvin, in case you had any, anything else?
Just to let you know, so Alder's here, lost connectivity, so he's on speaker on my phone, and he said, he's voting through that. I don't know if that helps.
Okay.
Okay. He said aye.
Okay. Not sure for what yet, but Alder Johnson?
To close in the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. Certainly not to belabor the point because I'm definitely in support of the project, and I appreciate Gorman and Mr. Matcom's investment in the city of Green Bay. I think we need to find more quality developers like that to do work here. And of course, I'd love to see shovel in the ground on Monroe when we can figure that out too, as I know that's been a challenge. But I wanted to just take an opportunity, you know, because I know some conversation has occurred around the TIF incentive and how that's all set up, and I think it's important for all of us to truly take some time to understand how TIF works because I think it is probably one of the most broadly misunderstood concepts, and I think a lot of folks view it as almost like this corporate handout. But the reality is, you can't collect taxes on nothing. And TIF is meant to close financial gaps that allow you to collect taxes on something. And so, it's, there's a lot more complexity and nuance to it, but I think what we're doing here not only helps ensure that this project gets done and we provide a solution for 48 affordable housing units, good quality units in a great location in our community, so it helps us as a body attack a very serious problem in our community, but it also immediately adds 15% increment directly to the property tax levy. So, it's, but as we look at, I think, more and more of these deals, you have to evaluate the changing climate. You have labor costs that are up, you have material costs that are up, you have finance costs that are up, and TIF can come in a lot of different ways. It can come where we say, we're giving you 20% incentive, we'll give you 80%. I've seen deals come through here at 100%. I've seen payments that come upfront, some that are maybe heavier on the front end, heavier on the back end. There are a lot of different ways that TIF can work, and I, you know, I know our staff does a really great job. They're diligent with going through those pro formas and making sure that no ask is ever presented to this body that is out of line. That is their responsibility to make sure, and they look, they evaluate those expenses, they cross-reference it against market rates. they cross-reference it against market rates, and what's happening in the market, that's their job, that's what we trust them to do. Um, and of course, I, I study these all the time. I'm kind of a nerd for economic development, so, uh, I like to see these and, and how these deals are structured. And there is another mechanism here that's, I think's important to point out, because of course, when you're talking about TIF incentive, it also involves every other taxing jurisdiction, and there is a joint review board, so, that has representatives from the county, from the tech college, and the school district. So, our job is obviously to approve this from a city perspective. This deal goes in front of a joint review board as well, that includes all of those other taxing jurisdictions. So, there's a lot of eyes going on stuff like this, that hopefully will ensure that, you know, we're never making a decision that's out of line, and, and so, I appreciate staff and the hard work to, to get this done, and of course, Mr. Mackham's flexibility to, to react to changing circumstances. And I think at the end of the day, we're gonna have a really good product here, uh, that's gonna solve a, a really urgent need in our community, so I fully support.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on the item? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and that item is approved. Thank you, Mr. Mackham. Um, on to improvement in surfaces.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Weary. Uh, any items here to be handled separately?
Five and nine.
Five and nine. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. Those items are approved, the except, or that report has been approved, the exception of items five and nine. Your wishes on five?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Alder Stevens, you have the floor?
Make a motion to recommend, um, approval of the purchase.
Second.
All right. Alder Stevens makes a motion to approve the purchase of the license plate recognition system for two parking division enforcement vehicles. That was seconded by Alder Johnson. Uh, discussion on that from Alder Stevens to kick it off?
Um, I agree with, uh, the approval of this, but I'll turn it over to Director.
Grenier for...
For additional comments on it.
All right. Director Grenier?
Again, as we identified at committee, um, Parking Division is looking for approval of a license plate recognition for parking enforcement. This will be used for overnight parking enforcement, while city PEOs are looking at vehicles on street, uh, across the entire city. It will also be used for parking meter and parking lot pass enforcement. One of the benefits of it is it does eliminate data transcription errors and provides additional safety for our, uh, parking enforcement officers, not having to get out of the vehicle to, uh, either chalk tires or, uh, provide service. Uh, in certain circumstances, upon proper request, uh, we can also make that data available to the police department to augment the LPR data they are currently, uh, collecting for using their flock cameras for items such as inter-jurisdictional, uh, vehicle movement, uh, silver alerts, amber alerts, things of that nature. So, the money is available within the Parking Capital Fund. Uh, we have been planning on a move to this, uh, for some time, and staff does support, uh, the purchase of this equipment.
Okay. Thanks, Director. Other comments or questions? Alder Ek?
Um, so I, I did do the request to speak, and I don't know which one to use. I did go in, but don't know, it's not working, but, um, so I was a part of the, um, the vote to deny the purchase, and my reason is, um, because I think it's a invasion of privacy. It is actually something that can be open records requested, and so for that reason, that's why I'm going to deny it.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Any other comments or questions from council?
Mayor?
Yeah, Alder Johnson?
Chief Davis, a question for you. Council, if I recall unanimously, if not near unanimous, approved the purchase of license plate readers for police use. Uh, to your knowledge, is this any different than that?
The only difference that I can see, obviously, is the way in which it's used. You could, you could use it to show a car parked at a location, which might be a little bit more indicative of someone's destination versus, you know, our current system that, that just tells you when a car passed a certain point when it was moving.
So, car parked somewhere in public that people could see, right?
Right, but if it's on, you, you know, if you're talking about using it on public streets, it's still really hard for that, you know, I'm just thinking how that would ever even be dispositive for us as to where someone was versus just where their car was, so it's...
How long do you retain the data?
We retain the data currently for...
Thirty days, I believe?
I should know this. I think it's thirty days.
Yeah. Director Grenier, how long are we gonna retain the data on this one?
We're anticipating thirty days, but at this point in time, until we actually start the system, we don't know that for sure.
Uh, Attorney Bungert, on average, how long does it take for us to fulfill a freedom of information, uh, request?
For fairly simple requests, um, usually one to two weeks. Um, for more complex ones that require, um, downloading media, reviewing, it could take anywhere from about a month to two months.
Okay. And so the point I'm trying to make, of course, is that I think the window of abuse of the system of something like this, well, I don't think there's any risk of abuse, honestly, but I think the window is so marginally close compared to the efficiencies that our staff can gain. Um, and, and I, and I talked about this, uh, previously, but the ability, when, when we had the other, uh, the police department's requests in front of us, uh, the ability to make our staff more efficient by having electronics do what we're asking people to do right now, which of course is prone to error, it takes longer, it's more time consuming, uh, this is, this is faster, um, and, and I think it, it, it removes those errors that impacts our residents, that, that, uh, affects our staff performance. Uh, recognizing that this body, near unanimous, again, if not unanimous, supported, uh, a different acquisition, it's almost an identical product, the, uh, the amount of time, as Director Grenier alluded to, I think at INS, we could, we could shorten the time of this to fifteen days if we wanted to, uh, and knowing that it takes two weeks to fulfill a simple request, I just don't even see how there's an opportunity for, uh, for that process to even exist. So, uh, I, I, I support, uh, the request as presented.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scanell?
Yes, I too support it, and I'm not really sure, the concern here, I mean, the privacy to do what? Park in public? I mean, these are, we're not going to people's garages. They're in public places. So, if someone does put in a request, and even if they get that information, what information are they getting? About a vehicle that was publicly parked? Uh, I don't see the great invasion of privacy, even if it all follows through, and, uh, I, I can't even imagine what, what is going through someone's head to make such a request? Uh, I, for what information? To get what out of it? It seems a somewhat dystopian view of the world, that, you know, we have to be so concerned about these, these things, that we have to, uh, inhibit our staff from doing their job efficiently. I believe government is service, and the more efficiently we can provide that service, the better. And it, and for all the reasons Alder Johnson mentioned, but also, safety. This is better for our, uh, the safety of our employees. So I think that all far outweighs any possibility of how this could possibly be used, abused, um, even in a hypothetical. I can't even come up with hypothetical that would make any sense of how this could be abused. So, uh, I definitely support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder.
Mayor?
Uh, yes, Alder Sawyer, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I was gonna ask Director Grenier, you know, this has been utilized in other communities, uh, like, well, UW-Green Bay, La Crosse, Appleton, and Milwaukee, and I don't know if anybody can talk to the efficiencies of that system in those communities. Has anybody checked with them?
Just any perspectives from other communities, Director Grenier?
Well, as Alder Sawyer indicated, uh, the University of Wisconsin-Green Bay, the cities of La Crosse, Appleton, and Milwaukee currently utilize the LPR, and they are seeing, uh, they are seeing the benefits of it.
Thank you.
Okay. I, well, I mean, I've got a lot of notes on, on this, but I'm having a hard time of connectivity up here, so I, uh, I generally am in favor of this. Uh, I realize that there are some concerns, but, uh, I, I think that we're looking for safety and efficiencies here, and, um, you know, I'll say that succinctly, so I'm, I'm in support. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Uh, Alder Galvin, then Alder Campbell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Director Grenier, I watched the video, but I'm, I'm trying to remember. Do the, um, do these systems give the same information that the police would get? For example, if there were warrants, or on, on the vehicle, or bolos for suspects wanted for crimes or anything, when they run those plates?
The software itself doesn't do that. What the software does is it collects a license plate number, a grid coordinate, and a time. So, exactly the same as the flock cameras that the police department are using. The only difference is police, the police flock cameras are mounted to a pole, so they're stationary, whereas our cameras would be mounted in a vehicle, and we can move the camera around.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, for Attorney Bungert, um, my understanding is that motor vehicles on the roadways of the state of Wisconsin, it's considered a privilege granted by the state to the vehicle owners to be able to operate those vehicles on the roadway.
Correct. It's, it's a licensed and regulated activity.
So it's not a right, it's not an expectation, it's a privilege granted by the state.
Right.
And thus, I don't believe they have any expectation of privacy while they're driving around on the street, that the fact their car is on the street, properly licensed, that they have the right to prevent employees doing their job from knowing that their vehicle is on the street.
Sure. The, the question as to expectation of privacy with, with vehicles tends to get a little complicated, but if, if we're gonna narrow the question with respect to license plate, there isn't a, a expecta-, for example, in a, in a public records request, a, a license plate is something that's readily available, accessible to, to all those that are on the road, roadway, um, and so on, so there wouldn't be an expectation of privacy to your license plate specifically, because the point of it is to be able to publicly identify your vehicle.
Thank you. And, uh, as someone that many years ago used to go out and do that enforcement for the city, um, I can see where something like this would really increase, uh, efficiency quite a bit, allow them to do more with less, which is what we've been asking our employees to do for quite some time. Uh, the complaints I get for overnight parking in my district, uh, this would make it a lot easier for, for that to be done on a regular basis, um, and if it allows them to do it faster and safer, I'm all for it. As to some motor's, uh, expectation of privacy, then I, I guess he should just park his vehicle in a, in his driveway, his garage, or a private parking lot not open to the public, if he, if he wants that. Thank you.
So, Director Grenier, do you have something to add?
Yes, I think there's one important differentiation that we need to keep in mind. Under a Freedom of Information Act request, we would be able to disclose a license plate number, we would not have the ability to tie that license plate number to the owner of the vehicle. That has to go through the DMV database, and we would not, as a city, we would not have the authorization to make that tie together. So we could provide the license plate number, but we can't tell who owns the vehicle or any identifying information to the operator of that motor vehicle.
Right. Okay. Thanks. Um, then we've got, uh, Alder Campbell and then Alder Ek for a second time? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Alder Campbell?
Well, I know we discussed this in committee, and maybe it's for Attorney Bungert, or, but I know we talked about, is there a lawsuit in the state of Wisconsin for chalking tires? I know we talked about it, I don't remember what point came out of it, and maybe legal department can clarify that.
I'm not sure if there is an active litigation case, that I would defer to the city attorney. I know that has been a matter of discussion as to the constitutionality under unreasonable search and seizure, uh, as to whether or not chalking is legal. I know there are at least five states in the union who have made determination already that the practice of chalking tires is unconstitutional and has been rendered illegal in those states. Wisconsin's not currently among them.
Attorney Bungert, anything to add there?
Correct. I'm not aware of any active litigation, but I am aware of, of court decisions that have come down indicating that chalking, um, has constitutional, um, prohibitions related to it.
Alder Campbell?
So, you know, this is a hard comparison. As much as you'd agree that it would be an efficient tool to use, you know, sometimes old-fashioned ways still are the right way to do it. That's why our constitution was written so many years ago and still test, or still upheld. So, you know, literally, if you think about the thing of chalking, some official is taking and touching another person's property by marking it. If, if there's conflict on that, which you can only respect, even though it seems very simple, um, no different than an inspector driving onto your property, or whatever, but that's another issue. Um, you can only think, in today's world, how this may look to people as an infringement on their rights without them even knowing. Now, granted, everybody looks, doesn't look for chalk marks, um, you know, and the thing that confuses me is we're always constantly talking about overnight parking, and how is this all gonna blend with that? You know, that's the biggest question I've got in my head, is we want, and there's not enough room to park in the driveways, we gotta do this, we got all these different checks and balances to park out there, and I, I get it, I get it, and how many vehicles do we have in the city? Is it one for each side? Director?
What's the question, Alder Campbell?
I'm trying to, so we only, we two for two units, one for the east, one for the west?
It is for two parking enforcement units.
And that's all of them?
No. We have four PEOs.
So, I mean, it seems like a lot of money, and it does seem like, uh, there's gonna be maintenance on it, maintenance, maintenance on it every single year, too. So I think, you know, are we gonna grow this? Are we gonna make it more? I mean, there's a lot of, you know, it, it's a tough one for me, but I can understand, I mean, anytime your rights are infringed on, and you know, um, you know, with what happened down here at City Hall, and we, we, we're getting through that, and, uh, you know, what does this look like for the city of Green Bay to be, to be going to this level and trying to enforce more, more, uh, infringement on their rights, I guess? So, at, at, at this time, it's just a little touchy, and, and that's why I can't support it, and, you know, I'm all for the efficiency of it, but I just can't go with what I think most people would think on their infringement rights.
Point of clarification?
Uh, point of order?
Point, well, point of order. Uh, we're talking about chalking, which is completely different. Are there any cases involving the use of this technology?
Okay. I don't think that's a point of order, so...
Well, if, 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 if the argument was chalking, and it's not related...
It, it certainly could be a debatable...
Then it's a point of order. It's an argument that has no basis.
No, it's, it's something that can be debated, but it's not a point of order. So we'll move along to...
Well, just a point of clarification, then, is that, for clarification, is there a connection?
I don't, I don't think under Robert's rules, there's a...
Point of clarification?
I don't think so.
I thought so, I've done it before. I've done it before. Never mind that.
Yeah. Yeah, but you're in the queue, so we'll come back. Alder Eck.
Okay, so, basically, this will help, it's going to increase revenue from fines. Correct? I mean, it makes it more efficient to cause more fines for people to have to pay, correct?
Oh, that's a question for Director Grenier?
Yes.
Not necessarily, it could, alternatively, it could increase compliance with ordinance.
Okay, and then my second, on the, the Green Bay Police Department license plate readers, because Alder Johnson had brought that up. After voting on that, I received quite a bit of criticism on it because of it being an infringement on rights. And I did talk to Chief Davis because I, I guess I didn't totally understand that it was, that was open records, that was something that people could do an open records request on. And he said it was. And so therefore that, you know, that was something that I didn't agree with because as much as it's hard to understand it, there are people that would maybe stalk somebody. They might do it. And now I know that if it's, like, I want every day for, like, a certain amount of time that the police department can say that it's unreasonable, it's an unreasonable request. However, it is out there. So, I just wanted to clarify because I know you pointed out that it was unanimous or almost unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. We've got Alder Galvin, then Alder Scanell.
Attorney, this is for Attorney Bonger. And maybe I misunderstood you because now there's, there's two Alders since you spoke that say this is an infringement of people's rights. But I thought I understood you that this is not considered an infringement of people's rights.
Right, so I, I would be, I wouldn't go so far as being able to compare the chalking cases with respect to-
We're not talking, because we're not doing chalking.
Correct.
Okay.
The, the, the court's decisions in the chalking cases, and I haven't done nearly enough research to, to make a, a complete argument in the, on this topic, but the, the general premise is that the marking of someone's property with the chalk was akin to essentially, essentially the courts decided that you needed to have a warrant and be able to do that. This is not, this is not in line with the exact same fact patterns that the chalking cases had. So I, I kind of want to steer the conversation away from the chalking cases.
Exactly.
They're not, it's not, it's not an alignable example.
Right, and, and in essence, what I did in 1980 was to drive around at night, find a car parked on the street, note the time, note the license plate, and note the location. And then several hours later, drive back and if they were still there, it was in violation. It seems to me this is what this device does. It notes the time, the license plate, and I don't know if it notes the, the location or if that's up to the driver.
Correct.
And as we discussed before, there is no expectation for the owner of this vehicle. That's why they have the license plate on there in plain view. It's not supposed to be obstructed by, you know, I support the Packers type stuff or anything else like that.
Right.
Because they have no expectation of privacy. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we're getting back that this is an infringement of people's rights.
Right, and, and the chalking cases too had, that it wasn't a, a privacy issue, it was a Fourth Amendment issue. Unreasonable searches and seizures. So it, it, it's not, again, not equitable. So in, in terms of the example that you're providing, this essentially is just providing photographic evidence of, of the same. And my understanding is that, that's, that's what the system does.
So the system does what I did fifty-three years ago, a hell of a lot faster and a hell of a lot more accurate.
Based on what I'm hearing from the director, yes, that's, that's essentially what the system is doing.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson, then Alder Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Grenier, when we issue parking citations right now, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we also include a photograph of the infraction? Okay, so why are we doing this?
Yes, and our existing parking technology, the passport that we utilize in our meters and our surface slots, when you register your vehicle under passport, one of the first things that you do under your user profile is put both the make, model of the, the vehicle and the license plate. That's how parking enforcement is done through passport. As Alder Galvin had indicated, if staff so chose not to use any other type of identification for time limited parking, right now, without council approval, without any input, our PEOs could simply grab a tablet of paper and walk down Washington Street at twelve o'clock noon and write down the, the license plate numbers from a public sidewalk. And then come back at two o'clock and compare that list, doing it manually. What this proposed item on the agenda would do is simply automate that same process.
Okay, so, you know, I, I, I think back, I mean, over time, right? I mean, at, at one time we had cobblestone roads and then we said, you know what, there's a better technology. We're going to do pavement. At one time, our police rode horses and then cars came along and we got them cars. You know, fire trucks used to use horse drawn wagons that were pumps and they carried the water with them and then we put in fire hydrants. This is just another evolution in the technology that's available to enforce the law that this body passed. And I don't want that to get lost here, guys. We passed the laws, we passed the laws that said you can park here for two hours, you can park here for three hours. You can't park in that handicap stall. You are not allowed to park overnight on the streets. And if we don't like that law and we don't want to enforce that law, then we need to change the law. Until then, that's the law. And I don't know why we would voluntarily handcuff our staff with an inability to effectively enforce the law that we passed. It just doesn't make sense to me. If everybody wants a lullaby sometime at night, I will talk to you about, in nauseam, about parking management strategies and why they exist. There is a reason, there's logic, there's science. I'm guessing nobody really wants that, but like I said, if, if we don't like the technology because we're afraid of over enforcing a law that we passed, then I think we need to get at the root of the problem, which is we don't like the law. But until then, I, I, I support giving staff the tools that they need. You know, there's an old, and I almost hate to equate this, but an old Ben Franklin quote, which I, I suspect somewhere may be hearkening to, you know, which is those who give up essential liberty to purchase little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety. And I'm actually a huge fan of that quote. This is not liberty, so let's not make something out of this that it's really not. This is stuff that we're already doing, it's already in place, it's a small tool, small improvement to enforce a law that we passed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Grenier or Chief Davis, I'm not sure, but is overnight parking violations or parking violations in general a major concern? Have you noticed numbers going up, complaints coming in?
I don't know necessarily the number. When we're talking about parking enforcement, how LPR is going to assist us on that is not necessarily so much on the violation of the three to five AM overnight parking ban. That's a one-time deal. When we drive by and we find a vehicle parked in between three and five AM, that's a violation. That's easy, LPR's not going to assist us there. Where LPR is going to assist us is if we see a trend. If we see a vehicle that has been parked on street at the same X, Y coordinate for three nights in a row, then we can approach the police department and say, potential abandoned vehicle. And we can enforce the abandoned vehicle ordinance. They can then reach out to the, to the person who the vehicle is registered to, find out if there's a problem with the vehicle, is it under repair? Did somebody coincidentally park in the exact same spot three nights in a row? So it will assist us with things of that nature. Also, as we're going through, again, we can't just automatically share the data, but upon request from the police department, if they have reason to look for a vehicle that may have been involved in something, an Amber Alert, a Silver Alert, potentially a crime in our jurisdiction or some other jurisdiction. So again, they would have to have, they would have to follow their proper protocol for requesting that data. But then they could cruise our data to determine was that license plate found anywhere in the city of Green Bay to assist with their investigative efforts.
Okay, thank you. Chief Davis, since the camera readers or license plate readers were put in for the crime situation we had in Green Bay, have you found anyone guilty of a crime or?
Yeah, it's, it's a very commonly used tool in investigations. In one case, actually fairly early on, we caught a murder suspect using LPR that we wouldn't even have known was in the city-
Right.
-at the time that it happened. And, you know, like I said, when we had that discussion before, there's, there's judicial oversight over everything that we do to charge someone with a crime. And, you know, we would have to work out what the legally correct way would be to get data that we might need for a legitimate criminal investigation from DPW. But, yeah, that, that, LPR technology has been a huge help to us in terms of, of making cases in, in some situations where we would never even have been able to.
Thank you for that. I just, I want to step back and just reframe this because just like any issue, a good argument could be made in either direction. And one of the reasons why I voted for the license plate reader technology was that we were facing a very large increase in crime, a lot of violent crime as well as shootings. And I think that most of us were shocked that that was happening in Green Bay and the public, you know, rightfully as we all, as well felt, we needed to address that. And the LPR technology was one of many tools that the police department has implemented and in this case to great success. But that doesn't override the concerns some of us had with the surveillance state. And we can talk about dystopia and all this stuff and conspiracy theories, but there is a issue with some other governments across the sea implementing a lot of this technology and becoming very Big Brother-ish. And hopefully that never happens in this country, hopefully. As Mr. Johnson said, the liberty idea hopefully never erodes to the point that we are constantly being surveilled. And so perhaps that isn't being done here and perhaps that isn't the intent being used here. But for people to have concerns about constant cameras and constant audio surveillance and constant, like, monitoring of government bodies, it is a concern. I mean, some of you might laugh and joke about that, but for many of us, we do have concerns. I have concerns. I don't want every action or every movement of US citizens tracked and monitored by government. So that's, if you reframe it in that way, you can understand where some of the concerns are. I remember I had the best of intentions of, we have speeding issues in the city of Green Bay and I thought this idea that we should have camera enforcement like some other states do and I thought it was a good idea and I brought forward the idea to do a resolution and I proudly talked about it on Facebook and the liberals and the progressives and everyone and the libertarians and conservatives were outraged, not entirely, but I thought it was doing a good thing. But people are a little nervous when you start having camera enforcement. And this is just yet another step. I'm not saying I disagree yet, I, I'm really conflicted about it because you can make an argument both ways. But we just have to step back and look at the greater context of these sorts of implementations. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Campbell and then Alder Grant?
Director Grenier, I mean, you said this in the committee also, which we talked about. Now I'm going to ask for definition. You know, when someone's out there, first of all, I mean, maybe this is for Chief Davis, two, maybe two questions here. How far away is that name from that license plate? Come on, we're not, I'm not, I'm not, you know, blind and deaf, but it's one click away? How do they send out the ticket if they don't know the name? I mean, come on, this isn't just a license plate. This is a person connected, that's their property, that's their car.
During our-
How far, how many seconds, how many minutes is it?
During our use of enforcement for that purpose, our staff has the ability to access the DMV database. The LPR software does not.
Okay, I've seen a parking utility pull over some drag racers already down my street. I'm like, I stop and said, good for you, I didn't know they had the authority. So I questioned as a parking utility that just happened to be at the thing and when they went by and she pulled them over and I came back and went, good job, you know? So they do have some authority, correct?
Okay, I think the, I think the clarification you're looking for, the LPR technology, for instance, let's say North Washington Street over the noon hour. LPR, we drive down the street at twelve o'clock and we note the license plates that's stored in the computer. We come back at two oh five, so it's been more than two hours, that's a two hour zone. The LPR pings off and says, Wisconsin license plate ABC one, two, three has been here for more than two hours. That's all the LPR does. When the parking enforcement officer then enters that license plate into the ticketing software, the ticketing software has the connection to the database, not the LPR software.
Okay, I mean, this is how it works. It sounds quite advanced, but very simple, so maybe we should get the better model. I don't know. It doesn't make sense to me and I'm still. Thank you.
All right, Alder Grant?
Director Grenier, is the current process of tracking parking subject to open records requests?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Alder Weary, Alder, and then Alder Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At committee initially, I voted against this and then I was not at the last committee, I was on vacation. President Burnett summarized it well, you know, the benefits of efficiency and cost savings are undeniable and we're tasked with doing the most with what we have and we always say we don't have enough. So that's an important factor. The risk, as you said, which shouldn't be belittled, is a legitimate concern over privacy in an information age, you know, surveillance state, you know? That's what, that's what people see. The open records request could be for, you know, license plate one, two, three, ABC for the past month or however long we keep it. And I think the concern is not so much the records we keep on people who are getting tickets, but we store data, I think, on, in any license plate read. And so there would be information of just wherever we're reading at night or in any. Director, this would be just overnight and then maybe metered areas, right? I mean, we're not just plowing around the city, taking up license plates, right?
This would be intended for targeted enforcement zones and then also again for night parking. Night parking would be the entire city.
Yep. So during the day, it's really going to be in those enforcement areas where we may be used to chalk tires, so?
That's the expectation, correct.
Now, the old method, were we taking down license plates on paper or entering it into a computer?
At this point, we're not logging the license, that, that's not how we're doing the enforcement. We're doing the enforcement with the chalk marks, but as I'm sure you're aware, there are limitations and, and concerns using chalking.
And I know you had mentioned maybe a month for storage and I think Alder Johnson had mentioned whatever we can do to shorten that time to whatever the minimal we need is, a week, two weeks. I think that would help allay a lot of fears as well.
We, we would be happy to explore that. Again, I think what we would look to do is get the system in. Again, our vendor has told us thirty days at this point. If we find that due to how we're processing, that we can shorten that timeframe up, more often than not, the timeframe that a vendor is holding the data is related to the storage space they're providing you. So you're, you're paying for memory because we're not holding that data here on site. The vendor is holding it on their server. So we're paying for server space. There's a dollar per megabyte or gigabyte or volume of storage space. It would be in our best interest to minimize that storage volume to keep our costs down in the first place and only keep the data for as absolute minimum time necessary to complete our job. If we can shorten that down to a week, if we notice that, you know, again, I, I referred to the abandoned vehicle ordinance. A vehicle has to be abandoned in place for three days to qualify for that, seventy-two hours consecutively. If we find that we're getting everything done and we don't have a need for that data beyond a week, then we can ask the vendor to shorten our storage space down to seven days and overwrite the data at that point.
All right, well, that's, that's good, I appreciate it. It's important to note, you know, now with this new system compared to previous, what would happen is we'd be storing the storage of plate info of cars not in violation. I think that, that's the concern is that, that's information that's going to be out there and somebody could request it and say, hey, where's my spouse or my friend or girlfriend, whoever it is, where's their plate been over the past month? Give me all that information. And that, that's where it gets a little, little cringey. So, and I struggle with this one as well. You, the cost savings and efficiency director, I know we talked about this at committee, but what, what would this do for the parking division?
Well, it would definitely increase the ability for parking enforcement officers to handle time limited and metered parking during, especially during the workday. They would be more efficient at being able to drive through at a higher speed because they're not visually looking for a chalk mark to see if that chalk mark has moved. From an enforcement perspective, because we would lay out the zones, the way the parking is structured right now, within metered parking or time limited parking, you're only allowed to park in that zone. So folks who are trying to game the system by moving forward to meter spaces, that would change where the chalk mark is, that's still illegal under our current ordinance and it's very difficult for us to detect that. Whereas with the LPR technology, because it tells you the zone if that vehicle is still within the zone. Let's say just for the sake of discussion purposes, a zone is forty stalls long. And you started off in zone, in stall number one and in order to try to beat the system, you moved up to stall thirty-seven, okay? Because you're still within that entire zone, LPR's going to ding off and tell you that that vehicle has been in the zone for longer than two hours, whereas a chalk mark may not be able to do that. So those are the types of efficiencies we're looking at. Again, the data transcription errors are a very real concern for us. The human factor that plays into our jobs is all too real and especially during night enforcement parking, erroneously recording a, a license plate number in the dark on a street can get real.
Would we be able to do more night? I guess instead of how we do it now?
That is the hope. That, that's one of the things we anticipate with it. Obviously, we don't know until we start, but that is one of the expectations is our night enforcement would be able to, to be expanded. We get to more areas during the same period of time.
Would you say we're not able to fully enforce what we need to do right now or are we able to do that with this?
Oh, no, we are not.
Okay. Are we reducing any positions by adding this or? Okay. Are we reducing any positions by adding this, or is it more, we're just increasing how much we can do?
We're trying to increase what we can do with the same number of positions.
So if we didn't have it, are we in need of more positions, or we're just going to kind of stay at our current service level?
I think we're going to stay at our, we're not anticipating making a request for additional, additional employees at this point in time, but I think any department would, would gladly jump at the opportunity to add staff. I think all of us are in the same position.
I, I appreciate it. I'm still mulling it over, but I'd be really interested in bringing this back to our committee to discuss that length of storage, and really staying on top of this if we approve it, not just let it go and hope for the best. So, so I'll have for now. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Schannell.
Yes, I'd like to make some, myself clear, in that, in what I spoke before, I was not belittling privacy concerns. I respect those very much, and I just want to throw it aside, the Franklin quote is often horribly misquoted. He was talking about taxes, not about privacy. Yous can look that up yourselves, I won't go into that. What I see dystopian as, and I want to also make clear, I'm not putting anyone down, because I appreciate there are people on this council, or more paranoid than I am, and that's great. You see things differently from me, and that can be very helpful. But you need a solid argument. I have heard this is arguable both ways. I have yet to hear a solid argument of the harm done from this technology. It almost, I almost got something about a spouse looking for another spouse's car or something, but I need more than that. Where, where's the harm? Where's the, where's the problem here? That's what's dystopian. You, you have these, you just throw out these vague generalizations, you can't back them up with anything of substance, so that should be a red flag saying, maybe there's nothing of substance here. I appreciate the perspective in going down that road, and if you found something, that'd be great if you could share us with us, because I don't see any problem here. And I have yet to hear a solid argument against this. Thank you.
Thanks. Alder Morgan?
I guess we've acknowledged that in the state of Wisconsin, it's a privilege to license a vehicle, to operate a vehicle. You assign your driver's license, you're saying you accept that privilege. So our streets wouldn't be at limits that what you do on the street can't be reported or recorded. And in my past experience myself, I think we need to worry about other victims as long as we're not violating the other person's rights. I can't tell you how many times I've called people and said, "Your car has been parked on this street here for three days or so," and they said, "Well, that's stolen, it's reported stolen." I think the victims in these crimes would like to have their cars back for sooner. Suspects might be identified, but according to this, unless they're sighted, they're not going to be identified to the police right away, because they, they don't know unless it's been there for over that two or three hour period that they should write that ticket. Myself, I'd be hoping that if I had a loved one kidnapped or something like that, a machine like this would be a tool that would possibly get my loved one back sooner. So I kind of think this is a good idea to give another tool that could be used by law enforcement that's not violating the rights to be on a street in the city of Green Bay or anywhere else in the state of Wisconsin. I had experiences where Ash Wabbinan's been using it mobily on their squad cars for at least 15, if not 20 years, and they've found stuff, solved crimes, and recovered property for people. I think that's a great tool that I'm all for.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thanks. Well, after hearing former Officers Galvin and, and Morgan speak, you know, they, they both had excellent points, and I'm going to vote for it tonight. I think the concerns versus the benefits, and maybe agree with Alder Schannell, but I'm not going to say that. I'll vote for it. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. This would be for a third time, so we would need, you know, sort of like unanimous consent from this body in order for you to do this? Is the rule that we're only supposed to speak twice to an item?
And I, if, if, if you want, when that's fine. Otherwise, Alder Morgan just did jog my memory. There was a young lady that woke up in the middle of the night to find a man standing over her bed on the west side of Green Bay, over by Fort Howard Park. He subsequently fled the building, he was not found, but based on information from parking utility on the vehicle he had parked several blocks away, we arrested a serial rapist who had assaulted many women in the Brown County area. Just based on that alone, I think something like this is well worth the investment. Thank you.
All right, Alder Johnson, same comments to you. All right, very good. Good, healthy debate here. We have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Could, could we have a board vote?
We can. Alders, please use the board. Alder Sawyer, are you with us?
Yes, I voted yes.
Thank you. No, this is, this is, the motion was, yeah, Alder Stevens' motion is to approve. Yep. The motion is to approve.
The motion is to approve.
Correct.
Right. Yes.
So, Mr. Campbell, do you want to change your vote to no?
Yes.
I have done that.
Yep.
Wait, wait, wait. May display.
All right, and that motion succeeds 10 to 2?
No, actually, the, Mr. Campbell's vote flipped again.
Nine to three with Campbell, Grant, and Eck voting against.
Yes. I will fix that when I, I don't know why.
All right, now we're on to item nine from improvement in services.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Schannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. This was pulled by Alder Stevens.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the recommendation to approve the award of contract.
Okay. Alder Stevens makes a motion to amend that motion to award the contract. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion on that? Alder Eck?
Was there something, Director Grinear, that changed on that? I assume there's a reason why it was pulled.
That is correct. I, on behalf of staff, I apologize. This was not one of the contracts that we were giving, given prior authorization to award at a staff level, so it was on the agenda incorrectly as a report out, as opposed to consideration of possible action on review and award. So Alder Stevens is doing, is correcting that error from the original agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Alder. So Alder Stevens made a motion to amend that. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it, that item has been amended. Entertained, entertained a motion to approve is amended?
To approve, am I?
The motion to approve is amended, made by Alder Schannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Aye.
The ayes have it, and that item has been approved as amended. On to protection and policy.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, made by Alder Schannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Item's here to be handled separately?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Others? Seeing none, others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved, with the exception of item 15. Your wishes here?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Schannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. That item was pulled by Alder Grant. You have the floor.
The resident wasn't able to attend the committee meeting, so I just want to give her the opportunity to speak, so motion to open the floor.
Alder Grant makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Schannell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, the floor is open. So if you can just approach the podium, state your name and address, and then you have three minutes to address council.
My name is Tammy Southers at 3490 Yorkshire Road. I just want to clarify, the meeting last Monday evening, I was not able to attend, but it was stated that we were not going to connect a downspout on our shed, that, to the city line, and that is a false statement. We are connecting that, we're waiting for the workers to come back to complete that work. This will complete four downspouts from our backyard. Even though this information was in the packet I gave to the committee, without being, me being there to, to the meeting to clarify this miscommunication, then the vote was done without actually having all the facts, that I was actually going to be doing that downspout. The only downspout we are appealing is a downspout that is connected to a creek that was put in by Greens Landscape 15 years ago. The downspout is connected directly into the piping that is buried under concrete that pumps water from the bottom of our creek back up to the top, and at the meeting on Monday, Paul, one of the city inspectors, stated 15.2 gallons of water come off per minute into that downspout, which would be 912 gallons per hour. He stated that our pump would not be able to handle this. That is false information. The pump that we have in the creek handles 3,440 gallons per hour, or 57 gallons per minute. So him, assuming that our pump would not be able to handle the water is not correct. It can't handle that water. The creek is actually 32 feet away from the property line that was having the complaint, that there was three properties that are flooding this other property is what the complaint was. The creek that is in question is 32 feet away from the property line, which connects to a corner. We are not directly above them. The ordinance states that any downspout six feet from property cannot be going toward a property line. Well, we are well within these guidelines, so this downspout should not be included in the orders. Also, between the creek and the property line, we have put in plants and trees that absorb the water and keep it from getting to the other properties at a bare minimum. I would also add that our contractor that did write a letter to the committee stated that the creek is not an issue with the drainage, and what all the neighbors has completed is sufficient. Our next door neighbor has connected one downspout, the neighbor behind us connected, I believe, four. We've connected three, we're getting ready to connect the fourth one within the next week, weather permitting. This should be sufficient, and no other work needs to be done. I do have pictures that I did bring from the past rainfalls that we've had, especially the last couple ones we had. We had that very hard rainfall Sunday morning with an hour, and then we had a 24-hour period that was over an inch, and I took pictures of different timeframes on Sunday and Monday, and it's dry. The property that's been complaining is dry, so I feel like everything that we've done should be sufficient. Just to wrap up and conclude, as I stated in the letter last week, we are connecting that downspout, so that should not be in question. We're waiting for the workers to come back to do that last one. Our pump that has the other downspout connected to it handles 3,444 gallons of water per hour. If the creek overflows, which the city keeps mentioning that they say that that's going to happen, we've never had an issue with that happening, but like I said, that creek is 32 feet to get to the property line. We've got plants and trees and things, and there's actually rock a foot deep going around the property line over to that corner, and so that's a foot of rock, too, that all, you know, water needs, would have to get to, get through. The actual downspout is an additional 20 feet from the creek, and like I said, it's already buried, it's connected underground, the water gets pumped to the creek, and so that actually is helpful, not hurtful. All this water is going into the creek instead of going into a property. Lastly, just remember, nine downspouts have already been buried, and that's a lot of financial burdens that have been put on these three properties for this one property, and that really should be sufficient.
Okay. Thanks for your testimony, ma'am. Any questions from council?
Do you want to see the pictures?
Any questions? Alder Grant?
And just want to clarify, no changes have been made to the creek since the Gulf Simulator was put in.
No, nothing.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else here to speak on this? All right, entertained a motion?
Second.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Schannell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Alder Grant, still, you have any comments, or?
I don't, I don't know if anybody else has questions for staff, whatnot. Yeah, I can input after.
Sounds good. Any comments or questions from council? This item? No? All right, we have a motion on the floor. I'm trying, I'm just trying to find the queue here. Apologies. We've got Alder Schannell, then Alder Hutchison.
I appreciate that testimony. I wish we'd have had it at, at committee, it might have made a difference. I, now that we know that one spout is going to be connected, and it seems like there is some question on the pump, and it seemed like it goes to a creek, creek? Correct. Anyway, I, I think I could support the, right now, we're denying, we're denying it, so what was, has the motion been made to, to amend?
Well, we have Alder Schannell, and then we have Alder Hutchison.
Since I'm here, I'll make a motion to amend that we approve the appeal pursuant to inspections notifying us that the, the, the one downspout that they said is going to be, that the work is completed and the pump is sufficient. So, motion to approve the appeal.
Okay. Alder Schannell makes a motion to approve the appeal. That was seconded by Alder Grant. Just a clarification for Attorney Bungert, you know, language was used by Alder Stevens previously to amend motion, and then I handled it that way. Is it appropriate to handle the superseding motion to simply approve the appeal, or is this, does this need to be amended?
We can, really procedurally, it should be to amend the recommendation that's coming out of, out of the standing committee and then to approve as amended, but we can shortcut it as well, but it's up to the body.
Okay.
I'll shortcut.
Okay. So the motion is to approve the appeal. Again, that was made by Alder Schannell and seconded by Alder Grant. Alder Hutchison is in the queue?
Not approved.
Okay, so I'm in favor of the appeal, but I would like to hear from staff as to if the two things that were just explained to us are correct, how does that affect the proposed denial from staff?
We'll go to Mr. Van Kelseer.
So the two downspouts that are still in question, one comes from the shed, and the other comes from the house. So if we're going to connect the shed, that addresses that one, you got the one from the house that goes into the creek. The creek can pump X amount. My question would be, how big is the pond that that pump holds? Is it 3,000 gallons that it's going to all sit there, or is it going to go to the neighbors? So when we proposed this, when I proposed this to Tammy, it was like all or nothing. So if I, if we said, "Don't connect that downspout," she wanted us not going back there. If there's still an issue at the next true 10-year, 24-hour rain event, I would write another order to correct that downspout. I would still ask to have that ability if the issue is present.
And this is pursuant to you being able to, I mean, that?
Downspout is the only thing. Yep.
So, Mr. Van Kelseer, you're, you're sort of comfortable with the motion that was made with the contingency of confirming the work was done?
And writing an order if the event still occurs.
Okay.
Yep, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Further comments or questions? Alder Grant?
Has there been any complaints of flooding from the creek prior to the shed being put in, or the Gulf Simulator? I apologize.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So from the red, no neighbors had complained of flooding prior caused?
No, but- No, but, but one thing that keeps getting missed and overlooked and not stated is the fact that the three properties that we wrote orders against all brought in fill, all raised their yards, and flooded the fourth property. That's never stated or reiterated. That's what inspections address, is the issue that was created by these three properties.
So the reason I ask that is because one thing that remained consistent through the project is the creek. So that's why I asked that question. A change was made to the Gulf simulator raise, that's correct. And they are burying four downspouts to accommodate for that. So that's why I ask. One thing that is consistent is the creek. So that's a big point I think people should remember.
Correct, but the storage area that the creek would have discharged to on their property is where the shed was, and that's gone. So there wouldn't have been complaints from the creek because there was storage on all three properties. All three of these projects happened almost concurrently, within a year or two of each other, of all three.
Any other comments or questions? Alder Johnson?
Okay, so this is going to sound like a ridiculous question for those who maybe don't understand this, this metric. How often do ten-year storm events occur? Because it's obviously, it's not a measurement of time.
Director Brinier?
The storm event is a misnomer. It's actually relative to probability. So a ten-year storm event has a one in ten chance of occurring. What we've heard is that recently we've had some rather large storms. No storm that we've had over the past month has generated more than two point one-six inches of rain over a twenty-four hour period. Two point one-six inches of rain over a twenty-four hour period happens to have a return probability of one in two. If memory serves correctly, a one in ten storm event is approximately three point eight, three point zero-eight inches of water over a twenty-four hour period. We've not had a three-inch rainstorm in Green Bay in a long, long time. But statistically, it has a one in ten, one in ten probability of any storm generating that much water.
Okay, and so the reason I asked the question, of course, is one, just getting a sense for how frequently these, these happen, but also recognizing the amount of rainfall. I mean, it would seem to me that almost everybody would flood in a ten-year rain event.
Not necessarily. That's actually the design basis for our storm sewer system, is a one in ten event.
Correct, but for private yards, I would think that, that flooding would happen more frequently, would it not? I mean, my yard would flood if I had three inches of rain.
Over twenty-four hours? Maybe not.
Maybe not, but my point is, it just seems like it's a lot of rain in a short period of time. And so, Paul, you had mentioned that you would be, and I don't want to misunderstand this, which is why I'm asking the question, that if we did have that ten-year rain event and that flooding continued to occur, that you would be prompted to return and issue a citation. Is that correct?
Orders to connect that last downspout.
Or orders, yes, I'm sorry. So, okay. But there's a big if on that.
Mother Nature will answer that if.
Right, yeah, and that's what I'm getting at, yeah. Okay, so you're comfortable with the motion?
Yes.
And we'll deal with this in the future if the problem persists.
Yes.
Okay, good.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that appeal has been approved. On to the report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any abstentions or names to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. Oh, just a quick note before moving on. Obviously, a lot of approval of liquor licenses handled by Protection and Policy. A lot of work behind the scenes on the part of our clerk's office, clerk herself, but especially Deputy Clerk Fugie. So just wanted to thank you and staff for all the work that, that went into all those approvals. Now we're on to Report of the Plan Commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by, I'm sorry, I missed that. Alder Stevens? Any items to be handled separately here? Number two. Any others? One and two. All right, hearing none others. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it.
No.
Report has been approved, with the exception of items one and two. Wishes on item, item one? Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. The item was pulled by Alder Weary.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, it's in my district, and a lot of letters went out to people in the neighborhood, and there was a lot of confusion. And I'm pretty sure, ninety-nine, nine percent sure that all questions were answered. Neil, Director, to your knowledge, everybody comfortable who reached out to you, you know, I directed a lot of people your way.
Yeah, I did not have personally have any, a lot of direct inquiries, Alder Weary, but certainly I think, you know, Mr. Buck was the one who primarily addressed those. I think the concern was understanding, to think two things, that what the ten percent increase specifically meant, that was really literally just increasing the area for the existing signs and by those by ten percent. I think there was some confusion in terms of, folks were looking at the map of the line extending into their neighborhood, being worried about that. That was simply the notification line on that map that where those were indicated. So, so as far as I'm aware, there were no other issues.
Appreciate it, and thanks to Mr. Buck. Is there anybody here for this item that wants to talk? Okay, you're here, you didn't want, that's all I really needed. I'm fine with it. I think everybody's concerns were addressed. Thanks.
Okay, very good. There is a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been approved. On to item two, and that was motion to approve by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Scannell. You polled it, Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a representative from Family Services, so I would like to ask, make a motion to open the floor.
Okay. Frank, just the parties. Alder Galvin makes motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open. If there's someone who'd like to speak, just approach the podium and state your name and address. And you got three minutes.
Thank you. Angela Stook. I represent Family Services of Northeast Wisconsin, three hundred Crook Street, Green Bay, five four three zero one. Just wanted to speak tonight on behalf of our opportunity to continue our service delivery in the home. The home on six forty-four South Quincy Street has been a community icon since nineteen seventy-two for service delivery. Service delivery to vulnerable youth in our community, youth that may otherwise not have a place to receive services. Such an inviting place as our home allows, youth that may otherwise be running the streets, committing crimes, being on the run, using drugs and alcohol, a variety of, of kind of delinquent behaviors, I will call it that. Our home environment offers just a welcoming, warm place to provide our services. It allows us to have what we kind of call a home skills lab, an opportunity to teach youth, and sometimes adults, actually, how to cook a meal together, how to sit around a kitchen table to appreciate time together. We work on social skills. We work on independent living skills. We grill out in the yard. There are so many things that that home affords us to be able to do for the youth and families that we serve. We also just cherish the opportunity to have that home environment. We are, we try to be good neighbors. We have never put up signage to draw attention, that we are a service provider in the neighborhood. We've beautified the yard. We take care of the property, and we appreciate being there in that location. We can't provide the level of service delivery in an office setting, or even at our corporate office, which is on three hundred Crook Street. The home truly affords us to provide a different array of opportunities and welcoming and safety for the kids and families that we serve, that we couldn't otherwise do elsewhere. So we ask for the continuation of, of our service delivery.
Thanks for your testimony. Any questions? Alder Hutchison?
Hi, thank you for talking. I'm a member of the Plan Commission, and during that, during this application, there seemed to be surprise, I think, from you. I'm putting words in your mouth, but there was a lot of people from the neighborhood who wanted you or wanted something addressed regarding the number of cars on the street. Because it seems to me that over the years, the, the work that's done in this home has changed. I guess, could you do two things? One, address how the work in the last ten years has changed at this facility, and then the issue of the number of cars associated with, with that building during a working day.
Absolutely. The nature of the work has changed. Previously, to twenty eighteen, it had been an all-male group home for delinquent youth in the community from nineteen seventy-two up until about twenty eighteen. The house stayed vacant for a short period of time, and then we decided as an organization to move our community-based work, which we have an acronym called SELF. It stands for Support, Education, Life Skills, and Family, to move that work into that home to provide the very environment, to be able to do more of the independent living skills and such with the, with the kids and families that we serve. When it was a group home, there probably were maybe four to five cars there at any given time that were the staff providing the group home services. Now, being community-based work, we are coming and going a little bit more frequently than the group home staff. Group home staff may have been at the home for a period of a six-hour shift or an eight-hour shift at a time. Sometimes still coming and going during that work to be able to take the males that we served out into the community to and from a job, to just experience some, some community recreation and those types of things. Our community-based work, we do some of the work onsite at the home facility, but we also go back and forth from kids' own home environments. We bring kids back and forth to school, a variety of, of different things. So we do have a total of about seven staff. That's full and part-time staff. So at the greatest peak, we may have six or seven vehicles at that location at any given time currently. Sometimes it's only, you know, two or three, or might not be any if they're all out in the community doing the work at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thanks for your testimony. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Any other comments from council? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been approved. On to Report of the Finance Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Report of the Park Committee? Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none.
I got a vote.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. Report of the Park Committee is approved. Personnel? Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Public Arts? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? Alder Hutchison?
Jen, item T three.
All right, Alder Hutchison recuses himself from T three. That will be noted. All right, any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The report of the Public Arts Commission has been approved. Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission? Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Scannell. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Equal Rights Commission? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Hutchison. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it. That report has been approved. The informational item, municipal court report from May twenty twenty-three, included in your packet. Now on to Committee of the Whole. Just one item here for consideration, possible action on rights and legal remedies for enforcement action by the city under the city's authenticity plan. And that was an item that was brought forward by Alder Johnson, so I will defer to you.
Motion to go into closed session.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to go into closed session. That was seconded by Alder Scannell. Alder Johnson, do you have the language at hand?
The council may convene in closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five, subsection one, subsection G, Wisconsin statutes. For the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved, the council will therefore reconvene, or thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five, subsection two, Wisconsin statute, to take action on items discussed in closed session, if appropriate, and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Alder Johnson. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. I have a conflict of interest, so I'm actually going to abstain from this vote, and I'm going to not attend a closed session. So I discussed this with Attorney Bungert earlier today, and I believe it's the best course of action, given my conflict of interest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other comments on the motion? Otherwise, we will use the board. All right, and that vote is eleven zero to move into closed session, so we will do so. Call the council back to order. Entertain a motion to return to regular business. Motion to return has been offered by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. The ayes have it, and we are back to regular order of business. Entertain a motion to proceed as directed.
Motion to direct staff to proceed as... Sorry, motion to direct staff to proceed as directed.
Motion made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Stevens. Alder Burnett will be abstaining from this vote, as he has been to this point. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay. The ayes have it, and we're on to resolutions. Motion to suspend the rules, take up these resolutions with one roll call vote, was made by Alder Johnson and seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. Motion to adopt these resolutions made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Discussion here? We will use the board. And these resolutions are adopted unanimously. We're on to ordinances first reading. Alder Scannell makes motion to suspend the rules, take up these ordinances with one roll call vote, seconded by Alder Johnson. Discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Alder Scannell makes motion to advance these ordinances to a second and final reading, seconded by Alder Eck. Discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Petitions and communications. Adjournment. Motion to adjourn made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay. The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.